Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order this public meeting of the Board of Johnson County Commissioners on this 25th day of October 2021 at 10 o'clock a.m. If you would, Commissioner West has got somebody who wants to read, and then please pray with us if you would care to, and we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Over the weekend, I was reading about a particular individual, gentleman by name of Kevin Cochran, who was declared Fire Chief of the Year 2012. And this is kind of apropos, we have a lot of fire people out there. President Obama appointed him as U.S. Fire Administrator. Then in 2015, he was terminated as Atlanta's Fire Chief. Kevin was one of six children raised without a father in Shreveport, Louisiana. And that was back in the days when it was tough for a black person to assimilate into society and especially become a fireman back then. They weren't even allowed to be a fireman, and so he kind of broke through that barrier. But at the age of five, he knew he wanted to be a fireman. Kevin authored a book titled Facing the Fire: The Faith That Brought America's Fire Chief Through the Flames of Persecution. And in that, he had a pointed paragraph which was so simply stated, but so relevant to the day. And I'd just like to read that paragraph. "And when I shared my dreams with the people at church and at school and in the neighborhood, they pretty much all told us the same thing back in those days, that all of our dreams would come true in America if we would believe in God and have faith in God, and if we'd go to school and get a good education, if we respected grown people and treat other children like we wanted to be treated." They said, "All your dreams are going to come true." And that just rang such a bell in me, and I thought, "How much we need that in today's world? If the young people today could just hear that and emulate those words." Would you bow with me for a moment of prayer, please? Dear Lord, we thank you for the sacrifice, for your sacrifice and our salvation. Thank you for preparing us for the seasons that we experience, the level plains, the mountains and valleys of life. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
First on the agenda, four-star approval for a construction plan for the Meadows at Bellevue, Section 2. Morning, sir.
Morning. Meadows of Bellevue is a 90.8-acre, 197-lot subdivision that's located at the northeast corner of Olive Branch, Mollnicks Roads. Last November, we approved Section 1, which was 53.6 acres and 78 lots, and today we're coming for the board for Section 2, which is 20.9 acres and 62 lots. We've received everything. For approval of the plans, we've got the testing agreement, the inspection agreement. We've also got Patriots contract in the packet that you've been presented. The only thing that we're missing is a sewer service agreement from the city of Greenwood. At this time, there's been, I guess, some new legislation that's come down from the state, and the city of Greenwood is currently revising their sewer service agreement and is not able to provide that at this point. They have given us a wasteload allocation which indicates that the plans have been approved, reviewed, and are in accordance with state statute and all local ordinances. We've also gotten an email from Keith Meyer, who's the superintendent for Greenwood Sanitation, stating why they can't do this at this point. So the petitioner has requested conditional approval of the plans to proceed with construction operations, and we're doing this for earthwork, storm sewer, water mains, and other utility work except for sanitary sewer. As a part of the condition, subgrade stabilization, curb, sidewalk, and pavement operations will not be allowed until approval and installation of the sanitary sewer has been issued. And if you've got any questions, I'm happy to answer those, but we request conditional approval.
Just on a side, real quick, I know the developer made numerous concessions to the to the adjacent property owners on this project. Was that before you came on board, or do you remember?
No, that was before.
I'm just curious as if we're making sure they're following up on those that they made at the time.
Okay. We're in construction of Section 1 at this point, but I'll make a point to go back and get with Michelle and see exactly what the commitments were and make sure that those are being abided by.
I move to approve.
I'll second. I'll second that with the one condition on the construction operations. So there's a little caveat in there.
Motion's good with that. So I have a motion in a second with the condition. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Property crime liability auto and workers' compensation insurance renewal. Morning, Jim.
Good morning. Jim Wise, Epic Insurance Midwest. You should have before you our renewal proposal.
We do. And Barb and I have been through this, except for the couple of issues that will get taken care of. It should be fine.
I'd approve.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, sir.
Thank you.
That was easy.
That was easy.
Got to have insurance, like it or not, right? Prosecutor approval for additional persons to attend the trial advocacy to sexual assault conference, which I've looked at, but if Joe wants to come up, that's fine. I went through it. It meets all the criteria, so.
I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Prosecutor. Thanks for showing up. I don't see you here too often. That's kind of cool. Hi, Betsy.
Hi, Betsy Swerengen, Director, Johnson County Health Department. I'm here this morning to talk to you and ask for your consideration to approve community aid boxes in locations that are determined throughout the county that are deemed necessary. I'm sure you are curious as to what a community aid box is. What it is, is it's a combination of like an AED, a first aid kit, but these community aid boxes also do contain doses of Narcan, which are paid for by a grant, and we are currently partnered with other agencies such as the Sheriff's Department, Juvenile Detention, the hospital, with a group called Indiana Echo, in which we've brought in a big grant to help aid in dependency recovery, and this is kind of a focus of that grant that upstream prevention is managing for us. So I, in good faith, wanted to come to you before we moved forward on those and get your approval to do so.
Could I ask one question?
Sure.
Can you give me an example where some of these would be?
Well, we would hope that there is an AED box here, so we would just outfit that with the remaining supplies that aren't in there right now, all funded by grant money.
Okay.
Probably at probation, probably in the courthouse. I know some, they're determining, actually, every fire department was going to determine what area within their jurisdiction seems to have high response needs, and we were going to consider where to put them there. We might approach some local businesses too as well.
Yeah, that's why I was curious how much in the private sector.
I think we're going to try to balance all the way around.
Okay. Do we know approximately how many we could be looking at?
No, 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 don't know yet.
Quite a few.
Quite a few. We're looking at cost on that and what we can do, you know, grant-wise, supplemented then probably by preparedness and other grants that we are graciously afforded, so.
Yeah, good program, it sounds like. I'll move to approve.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. I think that's a great, great thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is that why all the firefighters are here? No? Okay. I'm just trying to figure that out.
We got to see what this provides us.
And I'm wondering why our coroner's not started no shade.
Because I'm on the fire department and we can't have yours.
Oh, well, I think can't the sheriff override that?
Sheriff works for me.
Yes, he does. I remember that.
I had to bring that up.
Just call me when you do that.
You're welcome, Sheriff. You look good, though, buddy. Back there, just so you know. Yours has always been there, so.
Keith Brandt, 911 Director. So the first thing we have is a request, just full-time hire date. We're bringing somebody on full-time later this week. His name is Bill Foote. And Bill, a lot of people are familiar with Bill Foote. Bill has been part of the dispatch. He's worked for us part-time since 2013. And before that, he retired from the city of Greenwood after 30 years of dispatching, so. I send everybody a list of, you know, the number of hours that Bill has worked for us, the number, how much, how many shifts that equals out to, and, you know, that's all productive hours. He's been our most reliable part-time employee. So the fact that we're able to bring that kind of experience on, I'd like to make an adjustment for him to, if possible.
So what kind of an adjustment are you talking about, Keith?
In what I put in was, you know, going back to the date of full consolidation, which is 2015. I know that's possibly, you know, a big ask. I think something fair would be if I look at the number of hours that he has worked, which is the, where is that at? 3,135 hours that he's worked for us, and that's gone up since I put all of this together, but that comes out to about a year and a half worth of full-time hours, and one thing to consider is that is 100% productive hours because he does not have benefit time to use as a part-time employee. So if we go back on that, you know, if we could make it, you know, January of 2020, I think would be something fair for that.
The tough part about that is we've dealt with part-time people who've become full-time employees before. And off the top of my head, I can't remember making that kind of concession. Obviously, changing his hire date to 2020 would affect his vacation and some other. Is that primarily what you're looking for here?
Not primarily. That's not the primary reason for it. It's more of trying to get him where I need him as far as a shift assignment is concerned.
What's the benefit that he would garner from doing this 2020 versus today?
So it would change in seniority based off of how we do shift assignments.
So that's an internal thing?
It is.
You don't have any flexibility with that?
I mean, if, to me, if we make that concession for one person, you know, to me, consistency is important when we're, when I.
That's kind of where we're at.
Well, I understand.
Consistency. Do you have any input on that?
I'd have to get with Sheena. I don't know that I've ever backtracked that far for hiring as far as paying, you know, if perp and that type of stuff, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be specific to the accumulation of benefit time and then still subject to the 90-day wait period for benefits, right?
Yeah, I would expect nothing.
From now, though.
Change.
So really, the effect that this would have is getting him some more benefit time, maybe just vacation, because he wouldn't backtrack all the sick and all the personal, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
If it's vacation time, then we've done that before, where an elected official or department head is bringing someone on with circumstances that warrant maybe an increase in their vacation time versus what they would get just starting out, and I'd be willing to consider that, but beyond that, I'm not sure that I'd be.
Yeah, I wouldn't be looking for, you know, you know, retroing any kind of personal time or sick time or anything along those lines at all. This is more of a, try to get him, it's more about the seniority than anything.
And the reason to take it back to January of 2020 is for the seniority, as far as that way you're consistent in the way that you apply seniority toward the employee, correct?
Ship assignments, yes. And I think, like I said, that looking at the number of hours worked over this time period, if I, if we look at that, that's about right at a year and a half worth of productive hours, of 3,100 hours.
So I guess the question then would be, could we give the authority to use January 1, 2020 for a seniority-only basis for this with no other attachments?
I think so.
That work?
That's, like I said, that's my main, my main goal there.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure that we have the authority to do that.
Well, I think he's.
If we do, and that's all he's looking for, is trying to regulate his his work based on seniority.
Well, like you said, it's an internal management practice. So I think he's probably already has the upper authority to do it, but coming here today, he could kind of reiterate that.
Maybe we give him a consensus that we would agree with his authority to do that. Gives you a little coverage.
Is this going to create any problems with who he's gaining seniority over? I guess that would be my question.
I don't, I don't believe so. The difference between anybody else that we brought on full-time, you know, full-time from part-time status is that Bill is the only person that has been fully released covering shifts. Anybody else that we brought on from a part-time status or full-time status were newly hired part-timers still in training. They have not, they hadn't provided any productive hours at the time of that transition.
Okay. I mean, I can send you out. Keith, you can kind of do what you want to with seniority.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I agree. Does that resolve your?
Yes, absolutely, sir. That's that one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Second thing I have, and this will answer your question about why all the firefighters here. So I'm requesting permission to make a purchase of another CAD module and to approach council to appropriate funds out of the 1222 fund. This is a module called Response Plans. It's based off of fire responses. The, I believe I sent everybody the quote from Motorola, what that would cost, of the $22,868 with continuing annual maintenance of $1,249.89. What this module allows us to do is to really customize fire responses in the county. Where, right now, the way our CAD system works is that if, let's say, a White River truck, say if an accident happens at 135 and Fry Road, and, you know, the White River truck that responds there is unavailable, it's going to look right now and look for another White River truck before it looks outside of that area when they may want into 92 from Greenwood. This allows us to customize those responses and put in order of what trucks we want to respond in which order. Therefore, reducing response times and trying to find coverage where needed. It's already going to be predetermined, rebuilt, all based off of what these individuals that are here have determined.
So you said, the main benefit is to who?
The main benefit is to, well, it benefits us as the 911sir because we're not having to, to, I guess, you know, there are cases where we have to go and we have to try to figure out who to send, or we'll have to take an extra step in determining who that is and getting those people started, where, but it benefits fire departments as well because it's going to reduce their response times. So it's going to benefit the, our callers and the patients and whoever it is that's calling. For all that, it's going to, going to reduce that.
And I assume that all the firefighters here agree with this? Nobody's here to.
We are home. Panda.
Let me state my name like they do in the council meeting.
Yes, sir.
Chief Jeremy Pell, White retention Fire Department. So I just wanted to answer that last question. I'm certainly in agreement with it. Who it benefits? The people we serve. Because it takes it from the computer of, think of an if-then-else statement. If there's a fire here, then do this, but if this truck isn't available, then pull this other truck, and the computer does it automatically. This allows us to take a building such as that new St. Francis Franciscan Hospital at Stones Crossing at 135, and the fire chief sit down and say, "We want Engine 51, Engine 93, Engine 201, Ladder 201", and specifically march out who shows up at that building when there's an emergency.
Okay.
And the beauty of it is, I'm sitting back looking, is this is pretty unique in my career. You have a group of fire chiefs and the director 911 Communications that are saying, "Please let us work together and let us send the closest, most appropriate response", and this tool for Heath to be able to do that is the one that will make a difference. It will be a game changer.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. And I assume, though, through the whole process, we're monitoring this as it works to make sure that it works?
Oh, yeah. I mean, there's, there are other centers that are utilizing this module. This is not a new module by any means. So it is, it's well-tested.
Thank you, sir.
I move to approve. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Keith. Thank you for your forward thinking, gentlemen. We appreciate it. Well, you need to ask the coroner if you need any help. I think he's the boss, from what I've been told.
Thanks, he is.
I got to keep this going.
Yeah.
I can see this being a monthly thing.
Yeah. Well, we don't need those guys coming in here.
Duane Burgess, Johnson County Sheriff. This is just an update of a ordinance that we had. The ordinance was 2004-14. But it helps us because back then they didn't have the Level 6 inmates that we held. We want to make sure that we have our ordinance and that follows suit, so we're getting our money for medical from DOC.
Move to approve.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff. Just out of curiosity, is your wife asking you to color your beard like my wife's asking me to color mine?
Not yet. I almost shaved it the other day and she hit my razor, so. Yeah, it's.
You need to, you look good, and it just needs to be a little different color than gray.
Yeah, I can't, it's.
He needs a new job if it's not going to be gray.
Well, that's true, too. We all do. Thanks, Sheriff. Appreciate you hanging in there on this, too, because it's, mine's driving me nuts. But would you please? If you need help, we have a security officer. Board of Commissioners, appointment announcement, which we're pleased to announce that we have a grand administrator in Johnson County now, it was Mrs. Emily Conwell, who is originally from Johnson County, or is still from Johnson County, right?
She lives in.
She was originally from Johnson County, so. Want to welcome her aboard, and I know she's going to have her work cut out for her, so wanted to make that announcement. She starts November 4. Thank you. Then we need to accept the resignation of the annual warden effective October 15, 2021. So move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Impact Fee Review Board appointments: CPA Adam Stone, real estate agent Tanya Smythe, and engineer Trent Newport.
To approve.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any further?
That was a pain in the rear to get them all, believe me.
Do you want to clarify the term length, maybe through the end of next year?
I would like to go through the end of '22 for this, and it can roll into our normal appointment schedule, but give them a year to get their feet underneath them on this.
Do we need to stay, Ron?
No.
No, I don't think so.
Not this one.
The need for this, I don't know how much it's going to be utilized, but we'll find out soon.
Motion, second, both okay with the 2022 term?
Yeah.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. End-up grant ratification, which has already been signed.
Yeah.
I have a motion in a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of Anthem Stop Loss.
Good morning.
We have someone.
Michael Piercefield from LHD Benefit Advisors. Believe you all should have the proposed renewal action for Anthem Stop Loss. We are recommending this year that we do increase the specific deductible from $150,000 on the medical plan to $175,000. You may recall, this is our final decision. That's outstanding for, related to the benefits here at the county. We'd originally thought that we were going to get between $80,000 and $100,000 in premium savings, but we were able to negotiate that the final renewal would be $167,000 reduction to the current premiums by taking on that increased liability. It's about a break-even of 6.7 claims, so if we have seven claimants that hit that specific threshold, we would lose. But we do run an actuarial analysis called a Monte Carlo simulation where we plug in the county's demographics, age, and gender, and we are expecting about four hits based on our current demographics. So happy to answer any questions, but we would recommend increasing that specific deductible.
We, at our last meeting, we talked about this, and we looked at 175, we looked at 200,000, and the cost savings associated with both. I think everybody thought 200,000 may be too big a jump one year, so we went from 175. Great news when Michael come back to $167,000 in premium savings, so barring any unforeseen bad luck, we should come out pretty good on that decision. So I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Michael, thanks for your work on this.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, sir. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Noonal business claims and credit.
We will register to receive.
Oh, sorry. I wrote that on the wrong line. We will register, receive participation agreements for opioid distributor and Jensen settlement agreements.
You're okay with it?
I'm okay with it. Yeah, I'm just reading. I kind of missed the fine print here.
I've been there. I've been there.
You good with it? I'll second Ron if you move to approve.
I I'm always a little edgy when it says the money may go to the state.
Right.
That always puts us puts us on the maybe get list, but yeah.
Been getting that a lot lately, though.
Yeah, I move to approve.
I have a motion in second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now new and old business, claims and credit card.
Uh, one for Jason. We had a claim for BMW Long Care for seven thousand eighty dollars. That kind of took me by surprise.
Two months.
Two months, okay. That was just a pretty big number, and then we had one for commissioners that benefit planning, four hundred and forty eight dollars and twenty cents. You have no idea what we spent four forty eight twenty on benefit.
Job description.
I'm sure the auditor will let me know pretty soon. Uh, Joe Bell is way to the left, but I we did have, I had a couple. These are kind of petty, but Special Victims Division, they were attending a conference, and they had two two charges for Uber eats, I guess, where they had Uber bringing them food. I'm not sure that we ought to be doing that necessarily because the increased cost, but there may have been circumstances which warranted it, so.
If they had to get taxis and go out, it might be, might have been cheaper just having brought them.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I don't, that's all I had. I had a I had a bunch of them for the sheriff. Eleven hundred and eighty dollars for K nine cop magazine, but I I found out that that was a and there was an event that they were attending, and then the charge at Kid Rock's honky tonk and steak, and then another charge of barbecuti, but those were all food. Some unique.
Yeah. Yearly training, that's how that's one place they offer.
Yeah, and then we did have one for earbuds for a hundred and thirty nine dollars ninety nine cents. Normally, those are less than twenty, so that may have been multiple purchases. I don't know. Yeah. We're thinking about the sheriff. He always comes up with some unique names for some of their expenses. I kind of like that. Yeah, I move to approve, plain.
Second. I have a motion in second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Minus for approval, ten eleven, two thousand twenty one.
For a second.
I have a motion in second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any public comment? All hearts and minds free and clear.
We've adjourned, sir.
Second.
I have a motion in second. We're adjourned. Thank you very much.